I understand that some of our members don't exactly attend these and I apologize for that, but anyway, first off, and this has become very apparent to me lately, but I want to thank you guys all for your service. And I didn't realize that until I entered public service and everybody thanks us for that. And it seems a little weird at first, but after you've done this for a little while, you really start to appreciate it. So thank you for your guys' service. And also, I want to extend you guys an invite to the new Borough Chambers. If you guys haven't been over there, it's pretty impressive. We have the hi-def monitors like you guys have now, which is really improved stuff, not only for us, I think mostly for the public, because finally, I think people can see what the presentations are. The sound system, they're still working out some bugs, but we're getting there little by little. And the camera system is not quite as clean as your guys', but it's definitely getting there. So if you guys haven't been, it's really amazing the transformation. If you think about it, all they did was, I mean, other than some carpet, they stripped the horrendous carpet off the walls and painted, but it's amazing how much bigger the chambers looks. When you guys come down the tunnel, so to speak, you'll be amazed at how much bigger it looks. And nothing changed, other than really the color in the carpet. So anyway, so a couple of things just to touch on. Like Mr. Ljudzinski said, just celebrating the four, the $4 million, that was, I thought it was a great thing. I was really happy that it passed unanimously. You know, I told some of you guys in private conversations and also public conversations that I felt that if the state didn't step up, like they didn't, that the borough was going to be there to back you guys. And I'm glad we were able to come together and pull that off. So that was one thing I just wanted to highlight. Couple other things that really, don't really have much to do with school board stuff, it's more borough stuff, but seeing as how hunting season is right around the corner, I wanted to let you guys know that we just appropriated the final money for the last phase of the rifle range upgrade on South Cushman. It's our understanding that the range is open, even though apparently there's a little bit limited access, because I think they're working mostly on the parking lot. That's a big part of the upgrade. So if you guys or your spouses go down there, it is still open, but you might have to have a little bit of patience there. And then also, a recent passage was we allowed through a new ordinance, a little bit of flexibility for the borough attorney. As you guys know, the attorney's office is really strained right now and very stressed, and a lot of us on the assembly are pretty worried about the morale there. So we passed an ordinance to allow a little bit more flexibility for the attorneys. Now, if they don't feel that they need to attend a meeting, if they're excused by either the borough mayor or the presiding officer, they can be excused from different meetings. So I think that's really going to help, especially with Jill's schedule. And just as kind of a personal plea, if you guys can, you know, whatever you can do, like we've been doing to try to leave legal alone, I think everybody would really appreciate it, especially Jill. Things are pretty stressful over there. And then another recent one that we just passed that's really interesting was part of the wood stove changeout program, you know, where we're all, as Representative Proch said at our last meeting, we're in a bit of a pickle with EPA. And, you know, we're really trying to get some of these, you know, dirty burners, if you will, off the books. And so we recently passed now, especially for the hydronic heaters, which have been identified as the dirtiest of them all, the borough is now going to offer $14,000, upwards of $14,000, if you'll surrender that. So I think that's going to help out with our air quality. And that, I think that concludes my report.
Okay, great. Let me see if there are any questions for you. Okay, I don't see any from the board, but I want to say thank you very much. These reports from the assembly are really good and informative for us. We learned some of the issues that are before you. And just as when we have a chance, we appreciate being able to be at the dais for the assembly meetings. And it's a good learning experience and a good opportunity for us to share. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so we come to the superintendent's report. And again, we're working on our goal of communication and engagement, ensuring students, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. So I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Minor.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Doran. I'd like to welcome our staff back and welcome back to all of our students who we'll see in a couple of days. We're super excited for the upcoming school year as we've worked really hard on preparations to welcome everybody back. Today's report will be a bit of a look back and then a look forward. And it will be a little bit longer than normal, so I apologize for the length. There was a tremendous amount of activity over the summer months that I want to make sure that I share here today. As you heard from President Peterson, I am thrilled to announce that after several rounds of collaborative negotiations, the school district and the Fairbanks Education Association and ESSA have reached an important milestone and have reached three-year tentative agreements. And I'd like to thank President Logan and President Peterson for getting us to that point. We have heard President Peterson's request, and we will work with her and her members to ensure that they understand our healthcare plans and the associated costs with them. If folks are interested in looking at what has been tentatively agreed to, there's a ton of information out on our website about salary and the different language options that were agreed to. I do want to share, FEA is scheduled to take their ratification vote on the 31st of this month. ESSA will be taking their ratification vote on September 9th. And if all of that goes to plan, then the school board will take up their ratification vote later. Definitely a huge thank you to the Fairbanks Borough Assembly and Mayor Ward for the additional supplemental $4 million. As was alluded to here earlier, it went a long way in maintaining our student-to-teacher ratio in our classes, added back safety assistance that are greatly needed in our high schools, provided some additional funding for charter schools, is helping support our AK Reads Act implementation, and then added a few teachers back to Hutch and Ben Ileson High Schools. So that money is definitely well-spent in our school district, and we just really appreciate the support from our community for filling in some of that gap that was left from the governor's veto. I want to let the board know that Andy and our communications team are putting final touches on this year's board book, so those should go to the printer very soon and be out to you within the next couple of weeks. I'd like to report out on summer school. Lots of different activities with summer school, starting with special education. ESY, our extended school year, provided services to 309 students this summer across three campuses. They also provided a summer learning camp that had 65 students enrolled in it. Student support services served 446 students this summer, many of them in the ASP program. Would like to say a public thank you for all of those individuals and businesses that provided donations for snacks and meals. As a school district, we were not able to provide the meals ourselves, and so donors really stepped up and we provided over 1,500 breakfasts, 1,500 lunches, and 3,000 snacks to our students that attended our after-school programs at Ryan Middle School this year. So that was huge for the students that attended in the program in general. Student support services also offered programs for migrant education, Alaskan native education students, and partnered with several community organizations to pay for the summer camp. So thank you to those organizations that helped us out there. Our career and technical education program, the school district had 42 students participate in the Intro to Trades classes at the Pipeline Training Center. This has become a popular option for high school students and a great way to introduce them to the trades. This included the carpenters unions, the electrical IBEW welding with plumber and pipe finners union, the laborers union, and heavy equipment operators. We know of at least six students that have already been picked up by unions and and six more that are on wait lists that came out of that cohort. So definitely a successful opportunity for our students and one that I'm very proud that our district offers. In addition, Mr. Pete Daley offered the Girls That Weld a month-long class this summer. He had 12 girls from all over the district participating in that. This year's project was Planters at the North Pole Library, which I just heard about recently. And so I'm looking forward to getting out to the North Pole Library and seeing what our students created in that program. Lastly, the Fairbanks Memorial Hospital Summer High School Internship Program has partnered with the district and had 21 students receive credit in that program over the summer. So lots of opportunities for career and technical education for students in the district. A huge thank you to CEC for their June intercession. 26 students graduated with CEC in June. 16 of those students were from district schools that still needed credit and graduated with CEC. 10 of those students were with CEC throughout the school year and graduated. So huge success there. Lastly, for summer school operations, our music camp. The board's been aware, I've made them aware of the success of the music camp, but I would like to say thank you to all those involved in making our sixth grade music camp successful. The camp was hosted at Ryan Middle School with over 50 students registered to play band and orchestra students. And with less exposure to instruments in our elementary school, this provides an amazing opportunity for students to get a jumpstart on their music education in middle schools and also gives them just the confidence to go in and know that they can do it. I did want to share one quote from a parent that I thought beautifully illustrated the importance of the music camp. This quote from a parent that I could share. "The opportunity to learn from such experience, staff, teachers, is such a gift, and we are very thankful." Her student was too shy to share, but she says daily how much she truly loves the music camp experience. And she keeps talking about it long after the daily camp is over. "This opportunity has been life-changing, and I knew she had music in her, but she did not want to start music this fall since she had not done so before." And so just a huge thanks to our staff and volunteers that made that program happen. I was able to stop by, and what an amazing experience for our students. Transportation update. We're starting the school year off with 80 routes, which is 12 routes better than last year, but a little less than the routes we ended with at the end of last year. Durham is bringing in drivers from outside the community to make the 80 routes happen. And Durham cannot make it this evening, but will be in person at our September 5th meeting to provide a report and answer any questions that the board may have. In relation to transportation, our IT team has created an amazing new notification and bus tracking system. We're doing a soft launch of this system this week and hoping to have it fully up and operational for parents and the district to be able to track where buses are throughout the borough in real time and then provide notification systems for late buses. So the board remembers that's something that went down mid-last year, and our district IT team stepped in and hand-built a new solution. That's going to be really beautiful. We'll share that with the board here in upcoming meetings. Vacancy report. Our school district is in a much better position than how we started out last year with staffing overall. Much of this can be attributed to our early issuing of contracts, which allowed us to recruit much earlier for teachers. We headed into summer with fewer vacancies than we've had in past years. Board members at your desk, you can see our most recent vacancy report. It looks like this. You can see that we're down to just one regular ed elementary vacancy and down to 10 openings at the secondary level, which half of them have long-term subs in place. I'm also happy to report that some of those secondary vacancies are also in process of hiring individuals, so we do have some candidates available to fill some of those positions. As is common around the country, we do still have several special education teaching positions available. We have 15 total special education teaching positions still open. Kate Hall and her team have been working with schools and principals to put plans in place to ensure student needs are met. So they've met with every principal and team to ensure that we're filling those gaps. There's also 15 related services positions open within special education, and most of those are filled by temp workers and contractors currently. Enrollment. I was asked to provide an enrollment report tonight. While I'm not comfortable giving you a complete enrollment overview at today's meeting, given students haven't, you know, entered school. They'll come back on Thursday. One area we are tracking and hoping that will improve is kindergarten enrollment. We have currently trended down for kindergarten enrollment. We're off about 120 students from what we were projected. And so we'll continue to communicate out that registration is open and ensure that students that have kindergarteners are available to register and enroll at our area schools. Three focus areas for my team and I this school year, as well as action plans at schools, literacy with the REEDS Act and REEDS Act implementation. Attendance, we want to partner with families and guardians in the community to ensure attendance improves at our school. One thing that's come out of the pandemic is our attendance has slumped a bit. We're not saying that students need to have perfect attendance, but it is important to have regular attendance. And there is a direct correlation between regular attendance and student achievement. So that's something we'll be focusing on this year. And then culture and climate of both our students and staff. You'll hear a report on our climate survey at the upcoming School Board meeting soon. I want everybody to know that fall activities have started and schedules are live on the district webpage. So if you're interested in checking out student activities, go to the webpage, look at the sports activities, the schedules, and get out there and support our students that are playing tennis, running cross-country, swim and dive is going, football, volleyball, and flag football. And lastly, I just want to remind everybody that school starts for all elementary and middle school students on the 17th. That's Thursday this week. High school students have a jumpstart on the 17th for freshmen, and then all high school students will come the very next day. So very excited to welcome all of our students and staff back to the district.
Thank you. Let me see if there are any questions, Ms. Burnett.
Thank you, Dr. Minor, for your update. I just wanted to ask, I know that you said you would keep up to date with the board with the transportation and the soft launch of the app, but I'd be very interested as well for like October, November, how this app is going and how communication is working with our community. I would like maybe a consistent follow-up past the soft launch.
We can do that.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. One, an observation. Thank you for the vacancy report and who's covering. If I am correct, several of those names are retirees. And so I sort of want to put a shout out there for retirees who, for the last several years, have come back and helped us, especially at the beginning of the year while new hires are still in process. So really appreciate their stepping up and their dedication to education. In terms of the enrollment, overall, and I know we don't know, we'll do that 10-day count, who is actually in their seats, and we know for sure are coming. Are we kind of in the ballpark of, except for maybe, except for the kindergarten?
Yeah, it really seems that way. As you know, it is difficult to predict, given the summertime activities. Not all families that leave our district tell us. And so that's the big unknown at this point in time. We feel like we have a good bead on students coming into the school. All of our elementary schools have connected with those students and families that are interested. But there are several families from year to year that leave the district that don't let us know. And so that's the big unknown. And that gap will close, and the 10-day count, and we'll be able to get you better figures here at the next meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. I just had a question also about the app. So it was my understanding that providing that tracking was part of Durham's presentation and promises as part of their contract. Where are they at with kind of providing the service that they promised to us? Because now it seems like a cost to us that our employees are working it and doing it. I mean, I know we just want it done, so I appreciate it getting done, but we'd like to get what we paid for.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent question. I'll ask Mr. DeGraw if there's been any conversations with Durham in terms of providing the notification services.
Yeah, I'd have to get with Mr. Hinton and find that language in the contract. Let me get back to you.
And if I might also, on Durham, appreciate your getting them scheduled here to present at our next meeting and maybe convey the question to them, too, that came up at the last report when they were here in June. What conversations they may have had with Kinross and if there are any impacts or planning regarding the ore hauling plan and if that will have any impact on the buses and just what that communication is with Kinross. So I know a number of people in the community have been asking about that and focused on safety with school buses and the tracking. So, okay. Any other questions for Dr. Marat? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. Okay, that takes us down to our action items. And the first is Policy 126, Parental Involvement in Education for a Second Reading. Our goal here is to create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. And Policy 126, Parental Involvement in Education, is proposed to be revised and is before the board for second reading. So could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of Policy 126, Parental Involvement in Education.
Second.
All right. And if I go to the administration and see whether you have anything at this point to add to this.
I do. I'll open it up. It's been some time since we did our report and first reading, so I just want to make sure that everybody is clear on what we're looking at tonight. If you remember correctly, this policy brings the school district into compliance with AS 14.03.016. The district has had some related administrative regulations in the past and has a history of providing appropriate notifications to parents when human reproduction or sexual matters will be discussed, as well as honoring parental rights to opt their students out of assignments or units. This proposed policy language does come straight from statute. And I would like to remind the board and the public that this language is much different than the proposed legislation in last year's legislative cycle. This policy that is up for consideration tonight continues to be an opt-out for parents and guardians rather than an opt-in. And we have Attorney John Patassan on Zoom as he helped author the original policy language. So if there's any legal questions for him, he's available for the board.
Thank you. So let me go to the board for initial questions. And we'll go to public comment after that and come back to the board for comment. Mrs. Maroti.
I just wanted to thank the administration for adding that last sentence, that nothing in this section prohibits a school employer, volunteer, from answering a question from a child about any topic. We talked about this at length at the last board meeting, and I appreciate seeing it in the policy.
Other questions at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Is there any public testimony on this Policy 126? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We're back to the board for any further questions or comments. I just had a couple of observations with this that I think one of the issues with this policy is it helps to make it very clear and hopefully easier for parents to find this policy and exactly what it says. In lots of ways, it's affirming existing district practice, but it does help to clarify it for parents and bring us in line with the current law. And though a lot of it is what we can do in terms of, you know, choices for parents to opt out of different things, that it's also a very positive type of thing where it encourages parents to, you know, look on our website for what the curriculum is. It's there. Go talk to teachers. You know, keep that communication and that, where there's those opportunities from teachers reaching out, schools or the district itself, reaching out for input engagement. It's not just when things are being adopted, but it's we want the conversation. And so I'm very much in support of this. So, okay. Seeing nothing further, I believe, Ms. Richardson, we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maroti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next is Policy 939, Building Education Success Together, Best Correspondence Program, second reading. Our goal is to create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. Policy 939, Building Education Success Together, Best Correspondence Program, is proposed to be revised and is before the board for a second reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of Policy 939, Building Education Success Together, Best Correspondence Program.
So it's been moved and seconded, and we'll go to administration.
Yeah, this policy is a cleanup of outdated language regarding our best homeschool program. We did get a couple of questions in past meetings about students needing to be enrolled in the Fairbanks North Starborough School District, and that is correct. They need to be enrolled to participate in BEST, and they need to be living within the state of Alaska. With that said, there is additional flexibility for military families based on the military compact regarding residency requirements. So when those issues do come up, we work with individual families to best meet their needs as they're transitioning duty stations.
Any questions at this time from the board? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, we're back to the board for any further questions or comment. Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward. So, Ms. Richardson, if you'd call the vote, please.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Maroti?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Policy 1156.1, Major Gifts and Donations, second reading. Our goal is to create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. Policy 1156.1, Major Gifts and Donations, is proposed to be revised and is before the board for a second reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of Policy 1156.1, Major Gifts and Donations.
Second.
Okay, so we have moved and seconded. We'll go to the administration, unless there's anything from the board right now.
I would actually like to move to change this just a little bit. So I would like to move to change this to say, "A major gift or donation may be accepted by formal action of the Board of Education. A major gift or donation is defined as either an individual item or a collection of items valued at $10,000 or more or an item individually or collectively of undetermined value which will incur maintenance, operating, or other costs reasonably expected to be $10,000 or more." The superintendent-- The superintendent may accept on behalf of the Board such, any such gift or donation less than $10,000 in value, or which will incur maintenance, operating, or other costs reasonably expected to be less than $10,000. Individual gifts or donations of less than $1,000 in value may be accepted by building or unit administrators. The superintendent will submit a recommendation for action to the school board on any major gift or donation containing an advertising message. An advertising message is defined as a verbal, visual, or written communication designed to influence a person to acquire, utilize, or support a service or product. The manufacturer's company or brand name on an item or product is not considered an advertising message. The acceptance of a major gift or donation containing an advertising message will be based on the following guidelines: educational value and impact on student learning and environment, and consistency with community standards. The superintendent will develop a procedure and method for recognizing major gift donors as appropriate."
Seconded? For second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This would actually act as really a substitute. It's an amendment, but it's, there's enough changes there. It will be a substitute and adds some clarification to what was passed in first reading. So, and I just want to comment, there was, we worked, I worked with Dr. Maynard on this to make sure that it is workable for the administration. It also draws upon actually the Juno School District policy that gives some various levels, and so that's why this has been brought forth as a substitute. So let me go to administration.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the substitute and the work that Mr. Dorn was willing to put into this. I think it achieves the big goals of making the process more efficient for schools and donors, as well as taking things off of the plates of specific individuals at schools. And so it really does that for us. I also like the language strengthened there. We are at the end of the proposed policy that I'll develop a donor recognition plan. That's something that's already in the works, and we want to make sure that all the donors that are providing their hard-earned money to our district and supporting our services, that they're recognized, and we'll put a plan in place for that.
Questions from the Board? Mrs. Burnett?
I'd just like to say that I actually support this and really, truly appreciate that final language of developing the procedure for a method of recognizing major gift donors. As a hockey mom who does this a lot, I know that donors really appreciate when they're recognized for something. So that kind of is a very happy medium with accepting and also recognizing. So thank you for this, and I support it.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Through the chair to the administration. In the committee, the principals who supported the change in the original language were concerned about not being able to accept more than $1,000 handed to them at their school, and this doesn't really change that with the change. And can you address that and that concern that they have?
I can. I think it still addresses the concern and that there's a couple of ways around that. One, if the individual is willing to come to the ADC, I could accept that on their behalf. The way that the policy currently reads, I believe that we could set up a time for me to go to the school and also accept the funds from the individual donors. And so really, where principals had an issue with this policy is that oftentimes they were having to tell donors, "Wait for the next school board meeting," which if you're a donor and you're trying to give somebody some money in May or June, that can be multiple months before that actually hit accounts. And so I think this is a happy medium and a compromise potentially of where the current language is at.
Hold up.
Thank you. Would you see any benefit in the language saying the superintendent or his, or their designee? So that way feasibly a principal could call you, speak, call the superintendent who, you know, and speak to them, have a, you know, conversation. The superintendent would designate that person to accept it, maybe by email, so they have, you know, it in writing or something like that. It just, I would really heard from many principals during the committee that they wanted to be able to take that within a reasonable timeframe. Like, let me put it on my desk, I'll let you know that I can accept it by the end of the day, or at least the end of the week or something, you know?
If I might, and then I'll let, give you the last shot at it, but, because I think that was one of the things that we were most concerned about, and we've had conversations, Mr. Maynard and I, even because it seems in practice, when I was principal, we were able to do that and move it faster, and somewhere has a change. This is to correct that, and if I am, unless I am mistaken, I'm quite sure I'm correct, elsewhere in policy, we used to always say the superintendent or designee, and it is assumed the superintendent could, can designate that. So indeed, I would read this with that designee if they called superintendent, superintendent could say yes, go ahead and accept it on my behalf, because indeed, we don't want these long lag times, so.
That would be my understanding correct, as well as that it could be superintendent or designee, as that's pretty common throughout our policy manual.
Good, Mrs. Smith?
So you're saying the language doesn't need changed because in the AR it will explain that it could be a designee? I mean, I just want to make sure, because we're not always going to be the people administering this policy. Like, I would like our policies to stand 20 years from now without wondering what we were thinking.
I, I'm pretty sure. I can't tell you exactly where it is, but I do remember when we made that change of just cleaning up language, that if it says superintendent, the assumption is designee. However, if you would like to amend it and actually put that in, we can do that, and that would not be an issue. It's a small change, but if you would, that clarity could be made.
I would like to amend the motion to add or designee after the superintendent.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any comments from Board? Okay. Let me ask, because it's such a, it's a small thing. Is there any objection? Okay, so seeing no objection, I don't think we have to call, or we'll call vote on that. Okay, so that is amended to add or designee after superintendent. Okay, thank you for bringing that clarification forward. Okay, all right. Anything else from the Board at this time before I go to public comment? Okay, is there any public comment on Policy 1156.1? Seeing none, we're back to the Board. Is there any further comments or questions from the Board? Okay, so what I'm going to do is we have a substitute there. If the substitute passes, I think given our conversation, we'll consider that as carrying the main motion. There's no objection? Okay, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Okay, that brings us to Action Items, New Business, Resolution 2024-03, Honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Our core value here is to embody respect for the diversity and dignity of all. Resolution 2024-03 proclaims September 15 through October 15, 2023, Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages schools, staff, and students to honor the historic contribution of Hispanics, Latinos through research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations. Could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 2024-03, Honoring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Ms. Burnett, would you please read the resolution?
Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education, Resolution 2024-03, Honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the United States commemorates the heritage and culture of all Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and whereas, beginning on September 15, 2023, and ending October 15, 2023, the United States celebrates National Hispanic Heritage Month as enacted in Public Law 10402 on August 17, 1988. And whereas Hispanic Americans have contributed significantly to the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of the Fairbanks North Starborough. And whereas Hispanic Americans value knowledge and learning, and whereas the diverse student body of the Fairbanks North Starborough School District includes Hispanic American students. And whereas Hispanic American exempt and classified staff support all students' learning, and whereas Hispanic American teachers distinguish themselves as educators in Fairbanks North Starborough School District classrooms. And whereas Hispanic American building administrators lead their schools with vision. And whereas Hispanic Americans have served on the school board with distinction. And whereas all citizens will benefit from an accurate portrayal of Hispanic heritage and culture. And whereas research findings suggest that presenting Hispanic American culture, history, and perspective in the classroom promotes academic success for Hispanic American students. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education proclaims September 15, 2023, through October 15, 2023, Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages schools, staff, and students to honor the historic contribution of Hispanics, Latinos through research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations.
Okay, any comments, questions from the Board? Seeing none at this time, we'll go to the public. Any public comment on this resolution? Let's come back to the, well, seeing none, we're closed public comment, we're back to the Board. Any comments? Okay, just wanted to say appreciate this resolution, and we'll be glad to support it. So, Ms. Richardson, if you would call the vote, please.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Okay, for our next agenda item, I am going to recruise myself. It's a request for approval from the Department of Education and Early Development for the employment of Kathleen Doran, and since she is my wife, I will turn the gavel over to Ms. Marotti to take care of this, and I will leave the dais until after this item is taken care of.
Next is a request for approval from the Department of Education and Early Development for the employment of Kathleen Doran. Board member Tim Doran is asking the school board to seek approval from the Department of Education and Early Development Commissioner in order for his wife, Kathleen Doran, to be hired by the school district as a part-time mentor teacher for emergency certification teachers at the district, effective upon only if approved by the Commissioner of Education. School Board Policy 524, Nepotism, states members of the immediate family of board members shall not be employed by the district except upon written approval of the State Commissioner of Education, Alaska Statute 14.14.140. This is aligned with our goals and objectives. Number four, workforce and organizational excellence, to create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. May I get a motion?
Move to request written approval from the Department of Education and Early Development as specified in AS 1414140 to hire Kathleen Doran's school board member Timothy Doran's wife as a part-time mentor teacher for emergency certification teachers at the district contingent upon the written approval of the Commissioner of Education.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none. Do any board members have comments or questions? Seeing none. Ms. Richardson, we're ready for the vote, please.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Okay, I'll say thank you, and with that, I will take back the gavel. We'll move on to the next one.
Okay.
So next, we go to Information and Reports, the District Alaska REEDS Act Implementation. Our goal is to ensure students, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Kate LaPlante, Assistant Superintendent and Chain Bean, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, will provide a report on the Alaska REEDS Act implementation. So, turn that over through Dr. Maynard.
Well, thank you. I'd like to say a huge thank you to Assistant Superintendent Kate LaPlante and Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Chain Bean. They put in a considerable, considerable amount of work getting ready for the implementation of the REEDS Act going back almost a year in time now. I'd also like to thank those members of our idea teams who both Kate and Chain will share a lot of their work today. They've been instrumental in creating the plans and resources for our teachers to prepare for this upcoming legislation. So I'll turn the floor over to Kate and Chain and look forward to the report.
Thank you very much. I'm waiting for a code to connect to Air Change while I wait for that, while I wait for that code. If anybody, I have a port of the paper copy, if anybody wants a copy of it. Just get this one. Yeah, there's like the board in there.
As Miss LaPlante is bringing that up, just a reminder, there is one in the packet, a copy of it, so.
Thank you, Dr. Maynard and the school board. It is with a lot of pleasure, actually, that we are sitting here before you to provide our report on our elementary reading plan. I can think of very few things that I've been as earnestly as excited to do, to get us focused back on literacy seems like such a perfect way to start a school year. So I'm here with Chain Bean, the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and he and I have worked closely together to get our district to this point. We will continue to work closely because there's a lot of work yet to be done. We will continue to work closely because there's a lot of work yet to be done, but we're proud to, to share our plan moving forward. I'd just like to bring things back to our vision and mission, which the school board sets for us. The student, this is related to student success, to increase academic achievement and social emotional well-being for all students, and multiple pathways, to provide multiple ways to progress through the K-12 system based on student needs and interests. And as we've stated in our report, we have the belief that reading is a fundamental right, and it is the district's civic responsibility to provide every student with the resources and support they need to become proficient readers. And I believe that is what our lawmakers had intended when they put the Alaska REEDS Act into motion.
So the law itself was passed last summer, not, not a few months ago, but like fourteen months ago, summer of twenty twenty-two. It came into effect just about forty-five days ago, July first of this summer, and now we are moving forward with it. The goal of the whole act is to ensure that all of the students in our state can be good, strong readers by the end of third grade. That's the, that's the bottom line goal. There are three components to it. Component number one would be to make sure that we have textbooks and items that are aligned with the science of reading. Part number two is good, strong PD for our teachers in the area of reading. And component number three is to make sure that all of our schools have individual reading plans for schools or for students that are struggling in tho, in those grade levels. Our schools are moving forward with that in a variety of ways, but every student in K-three who falls below that standard will have a plan written for them. I want to take a few minutes to talk about the team that we've been working with. I'm very proud of the work that these teachers have done, and I want to kind of talk about the things that, that, that they have done because they have kind of pushed this forward for us. We have about thirty-five teachers, K-five teachers, who are on this team. And if you look at the visual, we can start in the top right-hand corner, and this is kind of what they've been doing with this, is that they took the A.K. REEDS Act, they dug into it, they figured out what the details of it were, and they're working on trying to make sure that we hit every one of those details. And it's, it's very complex. One line can lead to several different things that have to happen. And they've, they've done a really great job digging into it to, to make sure that we're getting done what we need to get done. They have worked together, they've collaborated, and because of their work together all throughout last year, they met about once a month, all second semester and the summer, that they were able to create documents and tools for our families and for other teachers to use. We have many, many things, be they simple documents, whether they're videos, outlines, timelines, all kinds of things that they have worked on for us. And then finally, they're working on how we communicate with all stakeholders, not just teachers, but with our families also, because that's a big part of this, is that we started last year trying to get the word out to the families, and we're still working on it, but the reality is we have a long way to go because there's a lot of families out there, and we have to reach as many as we can. And we're going to be doing that, we, we started last spring, we'll be doing that this year with ice cream socials and open houses, that we will be there talking to families, handing out documents to make sure that they know what is coming with this law.
Thank you. While you will hear a lot about the science of reading, we also believe that it is important to align our act with the art of teaching reading, and that it's the effectiveness of a quality, highly-trained, skilled, knowledgeable teacher who knows how to connect with students in real, personal ways. That is where the magic happens. So if we put the best materials in the hands of the best teachers and give them the best support, our children will have the best outcomes they can. So we're talking about both the science of teaching reading and the art of teaching reading, and we don't want to forget that the educators are at the center of that. We are relying heavily on the Alaska REEDS Act to support us, but we are also using it to strengthen our own focus and to go above and beyond where we feel it's appropriate. I do want to let the folks know that while we've provided a lot of resources and there's a lot of links, the state has also done so. This is an example of that. The district reading intervention is directly from the state. It's one of the ways that they sort of outline what's expected for districts to provide in their reading intervention plan, which is what you'll find that we've created here for you. So folks could go to the education slash alaska dot gov, A.K. REEDS, and explore all the resources there. They will also find a lot of what we've deemed as the most useful ones on our teaching and learning website, and we've linked our website to those for you. We're going to have to work on our math chain because you said three components, but we counted five, so.
Well, that's true.
That'll come next. So we, we broke it down a little bit further. We actually have evidence-based materials that are aligned with the science of reading. That's very important in this. Professional development, as we talked about, making sure that our educators are highly-trained and know what to do. We've had, I've taken the Keys to Literacy course that was available. We've had a lot of educators already partaking in professional development that's available through the state and through our district. We have the state-adopted literacy screener that the state's required, and we have, as you'll see in this plan, we've adopted M-class along with the state. There's the requirement for a reading achievement plan and individual plan for students that are below proficient in their reading, and the development of multi-tiered systems of support, reading intervention program at the school level, which you'll see in this report. And a lot of effort, emphasis is made on family partnership and communication. They, the state requires that we communicate above and beyond just the parent-teacher conferences or, you know, one newsletter. But when we have students that are struggling readers, we need to communicate frequently and often and include the parents in how they're going to support their children learning to read at home as well.
So component number one, evidence-based materials that go along with the science of reading. So we do have that already. Last year, we have core, we have new K-five language arts materials. We get that, if you remember, from the grant from the state. They gave us about a million and a half dollars. We purchased those materials, they are aligned. Those are out at the schools now. They had a small training on that on Friday. They'll have full-day training on that on September first, and they'll have a few weeks in between to get used to those materials. We also have intervention materials, and they're, some of those come from deeds, some do not. If we look at this next slide, we can see that, actually, this visual was created by the team that we have here. It's very teachery, so I think a K-five teacher would look, would look at this and kind of get right into it, but I'll kind of sort through it a little bit. Basically, we have intervention materials. Some of those materials are geared towards K-five students, I'm sorry, K-two students. Some are geared towards three-five students. Some materials are online items, and some are hands-on teacher-directed materials because we need all of those to make sure that we can give the kids the support that they need. Sometimes we'll be working on their own with the interventions. Many times, they'll be working with an adult, with a teacher, so they can get that direct one-on-one or small group support. And we have materials and tools for all of those items. Component number two is strict, is strong, effective professional, professional development in reading. We want to make sure that our teachers get the best PD that we can give them. Sometimes the PD is aligned with the materials, sometimes it's just instructional PD. Either way, we're going to make sure that our teachers have that professional development. That would include making sure that we have the PD available for our teachers to get their reading endorsement. As you remember, is that coming from the act itself, teachers who are teaching K-three have to have their reading endorsement. There are a couple of ways to do that. One is to pass a class that is approved by deed. We have many teachers who have already done that. We have many teachers who are in the process of that, and we have some teachers who, who still have to do it. They have time because it's not due for, for eighteen more months. We'll be fine with that. There are two classes out there right now that deed is kind of saying that this is what we take. We offer both of those, or at least we offer, we, we show the teachers how to, how to get to them. Keys to Literacy and Letters, we have both of those items out there. Some teachers choose one or the other. We even have a couple of teachers who chose to do both just because they want to learn as much as possible. So we have both of those out there, or to get that, the teachers can also take the practice test. There are a couple of versions of that. You can see that on the top right-hand corner there, and you can see which practice test that they would have to take and what their minimum score would be. But that's how teachers would get that reading endorsement, and we're working with them already. Some teachers have already done it, they're excited, they have that paper in their hands, and they're ready to go. I'll say this publicly because I sent an email out last week about it. Teachers, if you've already completed this, hold on to that certificate because right now deed is working on a way to where you don't have to pay to add that to your teaching certificate, but hold on, and once deed has figured out how to do their behind-the-scenes work, you don't have to pay the fifty dollars, we'll let you guys know when to do it, and then you can do it for free.
That's, that's good to know, I'm holding on to mine.
Okay. Component number three, state-adopted screeners. So we have a couple of different versions of that. M-class is for grades K through two. For those of you who have been around for a while, M-class is the eighth version of Dibbles. That might sound familiar to, to some folks. It looks a little bit different. Back in the old days, it was very hands-on, now it's like on a computer, but the kids still do the work and the teacher works on it. That's for K-two. We have a three-five, actually three-nine, but for these purposes, three-five screener called MAP. We've been using that for many years. We're very used to that. And we give both of these screeners three times a year, once in the fall, it's coming up very quickly, once in the winter, and then once in the spring. And as we talked about last year, the one in the spring for MAP combines with AK-Star. We remember that part in the slide, and a little bit of extra content in there. Teachers will take the data from these tests, and that'll help them do two things. One, it'll help them just inform their classroom instruction, but also help the schools inform their walk-to-intervention programs. So something that we haven't mentioned yet is that all K-five schools are expected to have a walk-to-intervention time. What that means is, in addition to their normal core time of about ninety minutes of reading and writing, is that schools will set aside three or four or five times a week, about a half hour to forty minutes of extra support for the students. Whether they need a lot of support or whether they're doing really well, schools will have a walk-to-intervention, and kids will go to groups that are more aligned with exactly where they are, and they'll get extra support on the skills that they need, whether it's short vowel sounds, or long vowel sounds, or blending, or fluency, or if kids are doing great, if they're fourth graders and doing, and, and they're doing great, maybe they'll do, they'll do like a book study. But we'll he, but we'll he, we'll hit each kid during that extra time exactly where they are.
Okay, so I'm going to go a little bit into those details that Chain was just talking about. So the next couple of slides that I'll share here are going to be how we've given the guard, the guardrails to the schools around that MTSS, the walk-to-intervention program. So these are a condensed version of a document that you have embedded in your, your written plan. So I'm just going to talk about the program, the learner, the grouping, and the time because I think these are the, the things that people are going to really want to hear about. So the program that we're going to use for our core instruction for all students K-five is inter-reading, the HMH two thousand twenty-two version. That's our core instruction, probably about ninety minutes of that will happen in their regular classroom with their normal teacher. For, that's all students K-five and all students K-eight if they're in a K-eight school. For tier two, so from that progress monitoring, from that screener, we're going to be able to identify if students are what we consider tier one, tier two, or tier three. And that's just correlates with the level of reading support or proficiency that they might need. If they are grade-level proficient, they're going to be tier one. If they're below proficient, they're going to be tier two. If they're far below proficient, they're going to be tier three. And that helps us identify what kinds of reading intervention supports they might need, although we would also do some additional diagnostic assessments. So for those tier two and tier three interventions, we're going to be using the materials that we talked about, Mira, Ufly, Smarty Ants, Bridge the Gap, Waggle, and Phonics for Reading. Tier two students will be identified through the M-class and then also through additional diagnostic screener so we know a little bit more about what particular area of reading they need support in. For the grouping, for tier one instruction, whole class, whole group, everybody there, approximately ninety minutes. For tier two targeted instruction, that's going to be a walk-to-intervention component. We're, now, some schools are going to be able to do this at different levels, but we wanted to make it something that everybody would be able to follow the guardrails and the guidance for. So those are going to be class, groups of anywhere from ten to twelve students, as few as possible, but we have to be realistic with the resources that we have and the staffing that we have. And that could be twenty-five to thirty additional minutes of instruction, hopefully about two times a week, could be more depending on what the school's able to do. For tier three students, that group size is going to reduce down to two to six students as much as possible, and the time will increase to thirty or thirty-five minutes, about four times a week. We also want to acknowledge that we have students that may have reading on their IEP. Where possible, this additional reading support would happen in addition to their IEP services, but that may not always be possible. So they would get their core ninety minutes in their, their regular classroom, and their special education might be their walk-to-intervention time, depending on how, depending on what their IEP needs are and the school's ability to do that.
So this is a, another visual from deed. As was stated earlier, deed gives us a lot of guidance with this, and, and sometimes it's things like this, and this has been very helpful for us. What this does is it follows the, the flow for a full year from that first assessment all the way through the end of the year. So if you could look at that, at the top, we can see that there's a literacy, that, there's those, uh, 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 tests that we would give. We give it three times a year, as, as we've already stated. Below that are the, up there, it's called the I-RIP, for our purposes, we call it a RAP plan, is that we would create those RAP plans. Now, for us, we were really searching for a place of where can we store those RAP plans because they can't be on paper really anymore. They have to be somewhere digital, and they have to be at a place where we can refer to them three years from now. So because, and then we thought about maybe, well, we can keep them in Google folders, but if you deal a lot with Google folders, it's like so hard to find things after a little while because you have so many things. So what we've done is, it's going to be in Power School, so it's easier for teachers to get to and to use. The idea team has worked on that also, along with some tech guys. Colin, I have a shout-out to Colin, he did a great job essentially taking what deed has done to say, here's what we need for you to do, and he made it very palatable for us. I think when the teachers do see it, that they'll see that it's something that they can do. It's going to be in Power School, we're really happy with it, and it'll be up and running by the time teachers need it after this window closes. The third one, I think, oh, intervention and progress monitoring. So we'll do those interventions, and then throughout the year, we have to make sure that we do progress monitoring. What that means is, is exactly what the words say, we're monitoring the student's progress. For example, we say, this student needs to work on blending sounds, so we'll work on blending sounds for the next six weeks, four to six weeks, and then we'll do a little progress check. How are they doing? Is this working for us or is it not? So that's what a progress monitoring check is. And then at the end, that last part talks about the dates that we need to start having, or not start, but when, when we need to have conversations with parents about what's going to happen in the next year. Are they, are your students going to move forward or might they be retained? Now, we, we want to be careful when we talk about this because while the law says, the law kind of defaults to if a student is not at the standard by the end of third grade, that they would be returned, but there's a lot of ways to kind of deal with that, and we are not, we are not making that a general recommendation at all. Teachers will, gathering a lot of evidence from a lot of places, will give them the guidance on how to have those conversations with their families. Also, if you look at the dates there or the numbers of days, and if you were looking at the calendar, you would figure out pretty quickly that the date, or that, that the way the law is written doesn't work on a calendar. So when you think about the end of the spring window, when those tests are giving, and then you go backwards a certain number of days, it, it, it just doesn't work. Deed knows this, and they'll be working with us. So we, so it's written in, in, in one way, but deed understands that it's impossible on that calendar. If we do have students, or when we do have students that are struggling, whether they're in kindergarten, first, second, or third grade in this case, we'll know that by the winter benchmark. That won't be news to us in the spring. We'll know that, and teachers can start having some conversations with families early on to say, we- to say, we need to really start focusing on these interventions so we don't have to start having other conversations later on. But I do want to make it clear that while the law does talk about retaining kids, that is not our default mode by any means. And then component number five is about, again, working with families. There's a lot of items in the law that prompts us to have conversations with families. Whether it's about to inform them that the test is coming, or to inform them that their student might be struggling, or it might be during parent-teacher conferences, to consult with them on their RAP plan, or to have conversations during the progress monitoring, or even at the end of the year, we start thinking about what happens next year. But that's a major part of this REEDS Act, is a lot of conversations with parents. And we urge parents that when teachers reach out to you with information, please, please get back with your teachers so we can have these important conversations about your child's reading.
So I'm just going to follow up on a little bit of that. You hit a lot of the points that I would want to make. And I just wanted to be clearly stated that it is our view, that it continues to be the district's view that retention is a significant and potentially negative impact impacting intervention, that we should carefully weigh, but also that the Alaska REEDS Act very, very clearly puts the parent in the deciding seat. So we will defer to, we will inform the parent, we will give the parent more than just one piece of data, more than just reading will be how we're going to make this decision, how we're going to inform the parent. And we will help the parents understand their whole child, how their entire child is working at school, socially, emotionally, academically, in reading, writing, math, you know, how they're getting along, and help that parent make an informed decision. But they will make the final decision. However, retention is also something that can only be done once in a child's career, and it's not recommended when a student has an IEP, is a migrant ed student, an ELP, English Language Learner student. So even the state says, you know, there's places where this is not the recommendation. But the parents will be making the final decision. And I just want to close on saying that I think that this, again, is one of the most important things that we can be doing to prepare our students to be the kinds of citizens that we want them to be in the world. Research shows that not only is reading skills a gateway to all other learning and to academic and career progress, it's also health-related. People have a longer and healthier life if they are, you know, can read well. They can read their medications, they can read the health labels, they can access the resources they need to live a happy and healthy life. So we are not only helping our students prepare for a career path, we're also helping them with their social and emotional and even physical wellness by helping them read. And that is our report, and we anticipated that there would be some questions, so we are here for that.
Thank you for that report. And D, we'll go to the board. I've got Ms. Burnett, and then Sardi, and Ms. Marotti.
Thank you, guys, for that. I just have a couple of quick questions. As usual, I'm just concerned with our teachers. First, you said that they just got the books, they're just there, they're getting their first training with them here in a day or so, and then the next one isn't until September or something. I just don't understand why we're having teachers teach with materials. They don't quite understand yet. But my biggest question is the cost to our teachers with this. How is the district going to support our teachers with the cost? Because with the raising cost of insurance and concerns that our teachers are having with that, I just, I really have a hard time with the state going, here's... And I 100% support AK-REEDS Act. I think it's great to focus on literacy. I just think it's a little weird that we're saying, okay, here's this great program. Now, teachers, you have to pay to do all of this stuff when you're also paying for other things right now. So I just, what are we doing to support our teachers through this?
Yeah, I don't, I can't think of too many things off the top of my head that teachers have to pay for. These classes, if that's what you're referring to, those are, the letters class, we are paying for here, and the keys to literacy is being paid for by the state. So they don't have to, but now, if they choose to, they can pay for college credit, which would go to their, back towards their papers anyway. So if they choose to do that, but they don't have to. The class itself is free. And as far as the training, I totally understand what you're saying, and this is a conversation that we have quite often. So materials are generally purchased in the new fiscal year, which is July, which means they get ordered in July. Now, these were ordered a little bit early, a little bit earlier, but they still didn't show up until over the summertime. So teachers really don't get them until they come back to school. They did have a short, like I guess, like we said before, a short two-hour training last Friday. And then they will have the full training on September 1st. There are times in the past where we have said, well, we'll do the full training before school starts. That way, teachers are ready to go. But they're not really familiar enough with the materials to get a full understanding. So it's kind of, if you put it right, if you put it up front, not all teachers like that because they want to get in and deal with the materials some. But if you do it about a month later, not every teacher likes that because they want to have the training up front. So we tried to balance the two. You have a little bit of introductory training last Friday, and then we'll do the full training in September, which is really, it's only about two weeks away. And the K-3 teachers should be doing a lot of procedures and relationship-building right now at this point.
So highlight what the IDEA team did to also help prepare teachers for that thing.
Thank you for that reminder. So there was some concern, like, so this is brand-new. And some, especially our younger teachers, won't know what to do with these materials because they've never really had any time with it, not just with them, but with any of them. So our team got together, we created lesson plans for grades K through 5 that encompass the entire first quarter. So a teacher who is unfamiliar with any lesson planning, which some of them are, honestly, they can just take that and just follow that on a day-by-day process. Our veterans can take a look at it and say, oh, I like this, like this, and I'll keep that in, but I'll do my own thing. And it's there if teachers want to use it.
Ms. Sardi?
Thanks for that extra information. Lesson plans is a great idea. So my first question is, is the student portion of the M-Class solely on computers, or is it just the teacher-delivered components?
Thank you for letting me clarify that, because I knew when I said it, I didn't say it quite clearly. The students are not on the computer generally. It's the teacher taking that information and inputting it into their device, instead in the old days, writing it down. But it's still, the kids are reading these letters, they're reading these words, and they're looking at a paper, or they're looking at cards, or whatever they're looking at. Thank you for asking that.
You can go ahead with one more, and then we'll move on to Ms. Marotti.
All right. Are the charters also doing the walk-to-read intervention model?
I believe so. You know, they have the same requirements as far as to provide an intervention for the students that are not meeting reading proficiency. I think they would have a little bit more flexibility if they have a different model that they think that they could use. One of the reasons that we are suggesting this model is that we don't have a lot of additional support staff to infuse into the schools. And so we have to create, so we have to look to a model that allows us to do this at a cost-effective-ish, efficient, but yet effective way.
Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. I have two questions. One's a follow-up from Mrs. Burnett's question about how we're supporting educators in completing the required 45-hour certification. I hear you say that educators are not paying for the class, but their time is super valuable. And I'm wondering, are they being given protected time to complete the 45-hour certification? That's paid protected time.
So I'm going to turn to Mr. Einert on this.
I'll jump in. We have had conversations about that, but haven't nailed down anything in particular in terms of protected time. Protected time is hard to get at, given the contractual requirements of the student workday, as well as, you know, various things like PLCs and staff meetings. And so we hear the concern, but haven't said anything in stone as of yet.
Thanks. I'm glad that it's being talked about, and look forward to hopefully a solution. Can I ask my second question? Thank you. I appreciate the emphasis on families and partnering with them. But what are we doing with students that don't have families, or the traditional families, or families that are not able to engage?
So the state, the law actually talks specifically about what happens, particularly at the end of the year, when we're talking about whether or not a student progresses to the next grade level, and who makes that decision if a family does not participate. And ultimately, that would fall to the superintendent's designee, in which case that would be me. And so schools will take what they know about the child, everything that they know about how that child's progressed, and they'll make a recommendation to me, and I will probably, in most cases, uphold their, the school's recommendation. They will make many, many efforts to connect with a parent, a guardian, the loved one at home that is for that child, and engage that person or those people in that decision. We don't anticipate that we will have to make that decision very often, but that's how the state has ruled it out.
I'll put myself in the queue, and then I have Ms. Sardi. Just to follow up to one of the first questions, and recertification. You mentioned they can get college credit for that. Has any conversation happened with the state or planned to consider non-academic credit, and maybe DED granting that, waiving the non-academic credit fee?
Can you phrase that question in a different way, because I'm not totally following. When you say "non-academic..."
Okay. So for recertification, you can get college credit, or you can have non-academic credit?
Okay.
And so my question is, but you have to pay for those up to three non-academic credits and stuff. Consideration, or perhaps I could just say that that would be a conversation to have with DED to see whether they could facilitate that for teachers, just like they're doing in getting the endorsement on certification. I would suggest that could be a good thing to follow. So my second question, then, is regarding resources and interventions. There are a bunch of new ones here, and really appreciate it. It's always good to see new things coming. We've also, as a district, invested in a number of interventions. Over the years, some of those seemed like a good idea, didn't necessarily pan out, at least on a broader basis, maybe for an individual student. Others said they were quite effective. Could you talk a little bit about the balance between resources that we've invested in, we have here in our district, and how they will complement the newly purchased materials? Because we always want to move ahead.
Thank you. We do always want to move ahead. And I think one of the things that's very important at this particular time for our district is creating a situation in which there is alignment across our schools in how students are being taught and the access to materials that they have. And so we are emphasizing that teachers use the adopted curriculum, the core curriculum, and the newly adopted intervention materials first and thoroughly before they seek to use anything beyond that, so that we can guarantee that students are getting adequate access to all of these across our school system. It's also important to notice that if we want to move forward, we have to kind of stop looking back. When we keep looking back at things that we have done, and they haven't proven to be as effective as they needed to be, we need to move forward. So that's the direction we're headed.
I could do a follow-up. So, and I appreciate that using, you know, these we need to look at first and see, and we'll see which ones are most effective, like we've done before, and which ones might be less effective. But in terms of, so if I understand that correctly, then as they look at these first, and we do want people to use them, we don't want them just sitting on shelves, and we need them used for the benefit of kids. But if something is not working, or they need to pull something for maybe one of these small groups of kids that we already have in our arsenal that's effective, that would be maybe on a school-by-school, looking at that, or whatever?
I think I understand what you're getting at, and I think I want to just continue to say that we are really asking teachers and every school to use the adopted curriculum, the adopted materials, and to use those thoroughly before they seek to use anything else.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Ms. Sardi.
First one is through the chair, a follow-up for Dr. Meier. Is it possible to have those K through 3 teachers who have to be certified use PLC time to work together in order to complete some of those trainings? Or I know there's flexibility in how we use that time.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be a possibility. I think it's unrealistic to expect that they would be able to do the entire class through PLC time because it is a considerable amount of time in terms of their weekly investment. But that's something that we have talked about in particular, is potentially using some PLC time. But I want to be careful, you know, not to overstate that, you know, if a teacher only used PLC time, they wouldn't be able to progress throughout their entire coursework. And open to any other solutions that folks have for getting at that. I mean, we definitely want to support students, or staff members. We understand what a heavy lift this is for them.
Follow-up, since you asked for other ideas, also the possibility of compensatory time. I don't know. I know that's a little farther-fetched, but since you asked. Question for you guys. How are we addressing the lagging literacy skills in our 6 to 8 students? We know from teacher testimony last year that we have 6th graders who are now 7th graders who are struggling with literacy as well, and they're not a part of this plan.
I'm super glad you asked that. We are very excited that we have, we've had a grant over the last four years. It's a literacy grant for middle school kids. It's had a big impact, or at Ryan. Ryan actually has a version of Walk to Read, and they started it last, well, they started it two years ago as far as the structure, and they really put it together last year, and they'll make it even better this year. We have a couple of other middle schools who are trying to do their own thing also with that. In addition to that, we have an additional grant, a one-year grant, that will allow us to fund to buy textbooks so we can provide a reading class in all middle schools and high schools, an actual reading class outside of the language arts class for the students who are really, who really need that extra help. And we're going to have, we want to get that up and running for second semester this year. We're looking for schools to kind of choose which teachers might fit that really well. And maybe there's only one class, maybe there's two classes. But my department will provide them with a PD where we want to meet once a month with those teachers between now and January, so they can be ready to teach that reading class for those secondary kids. We're super excited about that. That's not something that we have had here. It is a very needed thing because of what you just said. We have a number of students who are older, they're out of the K-5 realm, but they still need that support. And we're looking at it those two ways.
Follow-up?
Is it the intent that individuals receiving special education services could also take that reading class?
I would assume so. Honestly, we haven't gotten that deep into the conversation, but I would think so.
I could do a follow-up with that. Particularly on the secondary, I was very interested in the K-12. For high school teachers who are looking, I've heard a couple who have said, oh, you know, we need to be aware, more aware of the phonemes and phonics, especially as you're getting into more detailed language and such. And I know we found that for upper-level elementary, having to go back and revisit that. So supports to teachers who want to get a little bit more skilled in that area?
Yes, certainly, we can do that. We actually started that a little bit on Friday with the same presenter who several of you saw with the K-5 teachers in the morning. She went, met with the secondary teachers in the afternoon, did a little bit of that, and a little bit of what science reading looks like for the, you know, with the older kids. And we can continue to do that because for sure, we do have some students, especially in the middle school, who are still at the level of teachers need to learn about the blending, and just like the basics, and how do you teach those things. And that'll be part of that class that we can now fund because of this grant.
Thank you. We're into second round. I wanted to make sure Ms. Matheson and others who have not yet had a chance to ask before we get into it. Okay, so Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. You guys were talking about a reading class, and my understanding is that this is 6 through 8 that we're providing this reading class for, right?
It could be, well, it would be for middle school and for high school. Both. We can fund both of those.
Okay. Who... Okay. Who, what students will be allowed to take this class? Is it just for the students who are struggling, or will it be open to every student?
No, this would be geared towards the kids who are struggling. That's the level that we're looking at, to make sure that we can bring them as far along as we can.
And so, how do we, oh, may I ask?
Go ahead, follow-up.
How do we prevent students that are in this class from getting bullied about being in this class?
I think that's a good question. We're going to have to really be careful about how, like, maybe just being careful about what we call the class, and about how it's identified. And certainly, we will, we will want to do that. And I totally understand that, this is sort of a side note. My first year teaching way back in 1988, the first class I taught was called Basic Government for the Basic Kids. So, I know exactly what you're talking about, so that we need to be really careful about how we handle it. Thank you for that.
Okay, so I'm going to get back in the queue, I have a question. Regarding deficient, my first question is, the RAP Reading Action Plan, am I correct on that? As I read through the materials, I was a little confused. Is every single student going to have a RAP, or those who indicated deficiency?
Correct, the second. So, just for the students that have a deficiency in their reading as identified through M-class, we'll have a RAP. And the RAP is really specific to the K through 3 students. We'll have, it can be available to use for the 4th and 5th grade students or on up, but it's, you know, we're required to do that for our K-3 students. So, the Reading Achievement Plan will be for those students and for the students that have a deficiency. If they don't have a deficiency, we'll still be letting their parents know how they're performing, we'll still be doing the assessment, you know, three times a year. And if they develop a deficiency, if they were progressing, but then something happened and they're not making the progress that we thought that they were making, then we would want to scoop them up. Again, that's where we're going above and beyond what the state requires. The state says we should do the assessment at the beginning of the year, and if they pass, we don't have to test them again. And that doesn't seem, you know, enough for us. So, we're going to do the assessments three times a year for every student, even if they pass it the first time.
Thank you, and I appreciate both this and in your presentation, you're talking about how our district is going to implement it for the benefit of our students' parents, so to make the law work. Talking about deficiency, and I guess linked with retention, we have in policy that we use multiple considerations, and you addressed that. What's that balance in talking about deficiency and sort of the developmental range that students step into? You know, we have 1st graders that are reading on the first day of 1st grade, and we have those who come into it 2nd semester, and they're all within the developmental range. If you could talk a little bit about how that plays with deficiency identification?
So, there's what will be considered a deficiency based on a score on the reading assessment, and then there's all the other information that we know about a student, how they're actually performing and getting along in class. And that's what we want to paint for the parents, the families, is the entire, the whole picture. And obviously, like, if you're deficient by one point, that's a big difference, than if you're deficient by, you know, many, many points, and you, you know, didn't, and you missed the mark entirely. So, we would want to point those things out, and, you know, again, try to help inform the parents and help them make the best decision that they can for their children at the time with the information that we have. I believe parents do want to make the best decision for their kids, and we want to partner with them by giving them the whole picture.
Okay. Thank you, and if I can just relate it to that, and then we'll go to Mrs. Matheson. M-class and MAPS, if I read it correctly, 3rd grade will be doing both of those?
Yes.
And what's that impact on students?
Yeah. So, a student that in 3rd grade takes the M-class in the fall and passes the M-class, doesn't have to take it again, they're done with the M-class. They just continue with the MAP. If they were deficient on M-class, and they are receiving interventions, they would take the M-class again in the winter, and would hopefully pass it at that point, and then they don't need to take it again. So, our hope is that by intervening with, you know, 1st graders and 2nd graders, that by the time they get to 3rd grade, they would take the M-class once, but not have to take it again.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Matheson.
Thank you. You had earlier said that Power School is where our teachers would be able to track. Are the parents privy to this information on Power School? And how are we going to educate our parents?
Yes, our plan is that parents will be able to look at those RAP plans. As a matter of fact, parents need to be involved in those RAP plans, and they have to sign off on them, so they'll know exactly what is happening. And then they can, our plan is that parents can pull them up when they, when they want to look at them. As far as educating parents how to get into Power School and deal with Power School, that's kind of an ongoing conversation that we've been having for a while, because we know some parents are in there almost every day, and likely they're on it, and some are in there once a week, and some don't know how to log in. So, I think that's something that maybe as a district that we can work on, is that how do we get that information out to the parents, or how do we get them trained so they can log on and at least find out where the grades are. But that's, that's an ongoing conversation that we've been having for sure, just in general.
Other questions from the board? Okay, I have one, looking ahead. I'm thinking particularly the certifications and where our conversation might be on teachers and principals. You know, you have a 5th grade teacher who says, "I'd love to teach 2nd grade for a while," and they may go back to 5th grade, 4th grade. But in terms of having that endorsement, we've run into this before, under No Child Left Behind. Forethought on that at this point, or were questions, were we working with the state? And I'm also cognizant of principals, and principals coming in, so we're not in a gotcha moment.
Right. So, principals do need that also. They are, some of them are already on it, just like teachers are. The idea that some 5th grade teachers might move down to 3rd grade and then have to be endorsed, you're absolutely right. We have talked about that before, and we've talked to our K-5 teachers about that, to say, hey, if this is something that you're thinking about, that might happen to you, it might be really good if our K-5 teachers just start thinking about, well, this is something that maybe we should be doing, in case I do want to move down to 2nd grade, because that's, because that's what I really love, love to do. It's, it's my understanding is that once a teacher makes that change, they still have some time to get that endorsement. So, it's not a matter of, I have to have the endorsement to make the change, I can make the change, and I have some time to get that endorsement.
We've also been in communication with the Department of Ed at the university, and trying to make sure that the students that are coming out as new educators are already endorsed with those programs, and already meet that state requirement. Instead of coming out of your brand-new teaching education system and having to turn around and get additional certifications, we want that to be something that the state's already providing at the university level.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the forethought that's going into this. It's, as you were talking, it struck me that any way that we can garner how the law is working well and how it might be changed, because I remember even at the time that it was passed, there were legislators who said, okay, I'll vote for this, but I do know that it'll probably need changes later, you know, down the line. And I think deed and their presentations have been kind of aware of that, so, that feedback. Let me see if there's anything else on the board. Okay. I'm going to say, I really appreciate you bringing in that it's not just the science of reading. There's nothing new, as such, there are components and ways of how we think about and act on it, but bringing in the art of reading, because it's, nothing does everything for every student. And so, we'll need that. Dr. Minot, maybe what might be helpful is, I'm thinking, since this is such an extremely important part, really K-12, and you're focused on the literacy, that we may get some updates as it goes along, how it's actually working. And if board members have questions as they go through more of the details of it, send those to you, send them to, how would you like that conveyed?
Yeah, if you've got specific questions, you can email either Kate or Jane directly. If you CC me on it, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay, all right. That'd be good, because I know there's a lot of detail. I've got notes and stuff like that, but there's a lot of detail to absorb, and we really appreciate the teachers who are, they're the ones on the front line with this. And as we talk about Central Office being a support to the schools, appreciate what you're trying to do to support teachers, and for teachers taking this on and getting into those new materials, as well as keeping in mind their art and the crafts that they've garnered over the years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So, next, our last report tonight is for the Anne Ween Renew America Schools Grant Program. Our goal here is to ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. I'm sorry, I'm going to destroy your name, Jay. Jay Carrion, Executive Director, Facilities Management Department, will provide a presentation on the Renew America Schools Grant Program, and going through Dr. Minot, we'll give it to administration.
Thank you. Yeah, we're very excited to share the grant award with the board, and then allow you to ask any questions about this upcoming project. So, Jay's got a great presentation for you, and there'll be time for questions afterwards.
Okay, so, this is a project that the Department of Energy, they put forward, I think about 10 months ago. And then, I contacted the Borough and asked them if they can help us with this project, and they did, and we had a 2% chance of getting this grant, and we got it. So, it's really exciting. So, this is the Renew America School Grant that was an investment from the bipartisan infrastructure law to promote energy upgrades in our school districts across the nation. We were one of 24 recipients across the nation that got this award, and we were awarded $8 million. Here are the justifications of why. There was very specific, you know, criterias that we had to meet, and one of those criterias was it was a Title I school, the free and reduced lunch numbers, students that were residing in a disadvantaged community. Anne Ween is a designated emergency shelter. We host a lot of community activities there, like building rentals, FYSA, you've got a lot of basketball, IYB. And then, in 20, I think this date is incorrect, about 2019, there was a facility condition survey that was done by Western Demographics. They deemed Anne Ween in poor condition, and it was one of the schools that we were considering to close down. And with the other two schools, Joy Elementary and Nordeau Elementary being closed, a lot of the students from those areas moved into Anne Ween, and so there was a 46% enrollment in, to Anne Ween. So, the goals for this project is to do a 30% reduction of the natural gas. We want to return the building to good state of repair. The, we're going to extend the lifespan to at least, should we say 20 years, not 30 years, and reduce electric consumption by 10%. We also want to look at improving the air quality in the building, reducing the maintenance needs during the school hours. And also, we are also partnering with the National Renewable Energy Laboratories, which they're going to actually come in and do like a study for us and see how much savings we have made through this project. The scope of the work for this is we're going to be replacing the roof, we're going to be replacing the exterior insulation finishing system, which is the exterior building. We're going to be replacing the windows, we're going to be replacing the doors, we're going to be upgrading the exterior lighting, and then we're going to have NREL doing the testing and evaluation of that, which is the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. So, here's the timeline. The Phase 1, between now and January, we're already developing a plan, we're already starting to work with the NREL, we're working with the Borough. The Borough already putting a design plan together and working with contractors that's going to come to the work. In Phase 2, we're going to be drafting and issuing an RFP for the design services. We're hoping that the contract will be awarded by July of 2024, and then the design will be complete by November 2024. Then, there's going to be an invitation for a bid to be issued by January 2025, and then hopefully, the contract will be awarded by February. And then, we're hoping that the contractor will be able to procure all their materials, and then we'll be able to start construction in May of 2025. We did ask the Department of Energy that, because we have such a short season in Alaska, if we can extend this to 2026, and they were, they were able to do that for us. And then, here's a more, here's a more detailed timeline of what that project looks like. So, we're looking at it 2 to 3 years from now. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll go to board questions. Mrs. Burnett?
Not a question, just very thankful for this money. And as a parent of a former Anne Ween Elementary student, this is amazing. I'm super excited, and I can't wait for the new roof and the new lighting. It's, it's going to be a game changer.
Mrs. Matheson?
Thank you. Thank you so much for applying for this. This is awesome. And I can't believe, 24 schools, you said, right, received this?
Yes.
Oh. One question I have is, so I was reading through this, and I don't understand what's NREL.
So, that's the National Renewable, I think I have to go back in my slides. They used to be called, let me go back. So, they're the National Renewable Energy Laboratory.
Energy, excuse me?
Was the laboratory.
Laboratory, okay.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Okay, I have a couple of quick ones here. So, just on the years question, it'll extend its life for another 20 years, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I think it's been about 25 years since it opened.
It's actually passed its life expectancy to five years now, so it's a good time to get upgraded.
Okay, thank you. And that's related to the fact, in our CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, it's number 4, but it's because of these specificities of qualification that it has taken precedence over the higher-rated ones, is that right?
So, last year on the CIP was number 6, and then when we, when I presented to you this year's CIP, it was, you had already signed it, and then we didn't receive this grant until after, so I wasn't able to take it out of this CIP. But there was only two schools that was listed on the CIP that were able to meet the criteria, which was ArcticLight and Anne Ween. Both were in pretty, you know, poor condition, both are pretty, I think one is 28 years old and one's 25 years old. But we did consider, because Anne Ween was one of the schools that we were considering to close, and because students, the population increased there, that was the reason why Anne Ween was picked over ArcticLight. But there was only two schools on that list that were able to meet that criteria. So, if you were to look at other schools, projects on that list, they were not going to be able to, they didn't meet the criteria.
Right, okay, thank you. Yeah, let's go ahead. Mrs. Hardy?
Just, I was in the first graduating class at Anne Ween, if that gives everyone perspective of just how old that roof is and how long it's been there. I was there when it was built. And also, just thank you, not only when you said, you know, the KIP, or the KIP, which is slightly different, but that by getting this funding, we're also saving our Borough money, we're saving our taxpayers' money. We are no longer having to ask the Borough to fund an $8 million project, and that's because of district resources, going after those grants, and being good stewards of our community's resources. So- after those grants and being good stewards of our community's resources. So even more thank you for that.
I had a question in terms of looking forward. And again, as people have said, taking the initiative and finding out it was there and then working with the Borough to get it. And as was noted in the listening public, we can emphasize that this is one of only 24 projects approved throughout the nation. So that's well done. When you said a 2% chance of getting it, and you took it all the way to 100%, so. But with that in mind, do we have any other such grant opportunities that's on your horizon that might address some of those needs?
Yes, I do. I don't want to speak too much about it yet. It just came in this morning, and I'm already working with the Borough. And we're already discussing the schools that will potentially be able to meet the criteria. So yes, we are going after the grant, more of the grants. It's a lot of work, but I think it's worth it after getting this grant and working with the Borough with their fantastic grant writer. I'm very motivated to start looking into more opportunities.
Cool, cool. All right, anything else from the board? Well, congratulations, and thank you very much for taking the leadership role on this. Okay. So that brings us down to board and superintendent comments and committee reports. Our goal here is to ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. So we'll start with you, Colonel Averato.
Nope. Happy New Year. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing you guys.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. The Policy Committee will hopefully be meeting in September, and people who applied to be new members should be checking their email box to see about our future dates and looking for availability and whether they're still interested, because it's been a while since we solicited members. So if you applied for the Policy Committee, take a look in your email box, and we should be meeting pretty soon.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
I've got quite a bit. I wanted to, first off, say thank you to our negotiations team and to the unions for coming together and coming to an agreement. So thank you, guys. Dr. Minard, he expressed that fall activities are up and running. I'd like to strongly urge our community to show up. They're a lot of fun, and we have talented, talented students. We need to be the ones that cheer them on. I know that I'm the crazy cheerleader, but I will be rooting them on, and I hope to see my neighbors there. And a big thank you to our admin for taking care of the Alaska REEDS Act. I know that that's huge. Thank you guys so much for doing that. And for the, I mean, that's $8 million for Anne Ween. I want to go and high-five every single person that was on that. So thank you, guys. I do want to let you, everyone, know that the Diversity Committee does have openings. Please apply. And to those who have applied, check your email. There's an invitation to join our Diversity Committee. Thanks, guys.
Mrs. Hardy?
I just want to welcome back educators and students to our schools this week, and extra special welcome to all of the new educators that are joining our district. When I went through our hiring report, it was quite extensive, pages long. So also, thank you to our HR Department for handling all of that. That is a lot. Sorry, I'm very excited to begin, start visiting schools and classrooms again. So if you are an educator or a school that you have something that you would like board member presence on, please just email the board. We're excited to come. And also, it doesn't have to be a big thing. It can just be a little thing or a cool lesson that you would like witnessed by board members, and we want to be in our schools and see what you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
I don't have anything to report, just a big welcome back to all the teachers and students coming this week.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. Just a huge congrats to Dr. Minard for your first board meeting at the dais. Also, a big thank you for your improvements that you've already put in place, for your transparent communication style, and for you and the negotiations teams for coming to a tentative agreement. It makes the start of this year extra special. And welcome back educators and students and families.
Thank you. Mrs. Burnett?
Guess I should turn that on. A big welcome back to students and teachers. I know teachers are already there. Students come back in two days. It's been a great summer. Looking forward to the new year. Policy Committee currently is seeking feedback on science curriculum for grade 6 through 12. Up on the website, there is actually a form there. You can go check things out, do the feedback form, and then there'll be some public comment that closes on August 30. And we're definitely seeking that as there's been some changes with what they're wanting with science. So we're going to be thoroughly looking at that, and Policy Committee will be meeting soon. Also, we did have a couple spots open. We did fill from the list, but if those spots weren't filled, we will be putting a thing out there real soon. So if you're interested, you can always apply for that. Other than that, teachers, I hope you have a fantastic year. Admin, it's great to see you again. Hope you enjoyed your summer and look forward to the year.
Thank you. Dr. Minard?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for this amazing opportunity to work in the capacity of the Superintendent for the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. I'm greatly honored to be in the role and understand the immense responsibility I have to lead our district along a continuous path of improvement. I'm so encouraged and optimistic about our future as we have amazing educators in every school throughout the district. I'd also like to give a special shout-out to the Nutritional Services Department. I had the opportunity to welcome them back today, and their passion and energy in the room was amazing. They are all-in for our kids and provide an immensely important service to our students, and so it was just great to spend time with them today. I'd like to thank all the staff members who are back, and welcome all the kids in a couple days. Again, I would like to echo Ms. Brandy Hardy's comments that if there's things that you would like me or board members to see in your classrooms, we love being in schools and sharing those moments with you, and I look forward to being in schools very soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I add a few comments? When I do, want to thank staff and leadership team for being here. Your presence is really important. It's an opportunity for us to get to make sure we know the face behind the name and opportunities to just learn along with you. So thanks for your attendance at our board meetings this way. Congratulations on the opening ceremonies. It was wonderful to see the positive picketers outside. We had a great turnout from our community and different components of our community. So it's, those are heartfelt thank yous to our educators. You're here, you're present, you're there for kids and for their families, and that is well noted. And we do indeed look forward to getting into the classrooms, the schools, and seeing you in action with the students. We've had a number of comments about spent on the Alaska REEDS Act, but to the goal that was mentioned by Superintendent Minard is literacy, K-12. And I was very pleased today when I saw in the paper that UAF Education Program received a special reading of A from the National Council of Teacher Quality specifically about their reading preparation. And so as part of our community partnership, it's great to see that recognition as we're all embarking on something that's so important for our kids, and that's literacy across the board. It's not just reading, it's writing, it's math, it's science, it's social studies. It's the skills of operating as a team, whether it's academica or one of the sports, or, you know, there are so many different ways where we talk about extracurricular, but we talk, they're really not extra, they're intercurricular with our academics and what we, how students interact together. So, but congratulations to UAF on their kudos from the National Council. Several people have mentioned board committees. I'm just going to say for all committees that we have vacancies, we have opportunities for the stakeholders in our community to be part of that. That is part of parent engagement when we're talking about the parent involvement earlier on the policy. That extends to the opportunity to be part of those committees. So we want to encourage people, if you have an interest, we try not to monopolize your time. A lot of people have a lot of things on their plates, but to pace out the committee meetings. So it's doable. They, unlike our board meeting, we go until our work is done here. Those committees are, for the most part, unless there's something really special there, they try to really keep them to that hour and a half because we know the importance of getting back to your families and stuff. So keep all our committees in mind, check and see what vacancies are there and opportunities to join us. To the board, I want to make a comment, just keeping in mind that we will be scheduling some work session trainings for policy work. So I know Mr. Minard is working on that to nail down those times with President Sanderson. And we will also be looking at a time, and between the two of them, they'll be scheduling a work opportunity for us to work with Mr. Minard on, I should say Dr. Minard, sorry, on the, his goals for the year and how we're going to partner together and do evaluation as part of that as we go, but just kind of a monitoring throughout. So you want to have those just in the back of your mind, and as we get dates out, we'll, options out to you to take a look at those. And finally, as sort of a public service announcement, League of Win and Voters mentioned that September 3rd is the deadline to register for this year's municipal election. So anyone in our listening audience, if you have not yet had a chance to register, they wanted to let you know that September 3rd is the deadline to register for that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
Seeing no objection, we are adjourned, and thanks, everybody, for tonight.